Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do the people's work. At this time, if you would, please stand for the invocation which will be given by Councilman Dr. Curtis Edmonds, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Edmonds?
Gracious God Almighty, we thank you, Lord, for the day, for the rising of the sun and the setting of the same. As we come to do the work of the city of Portsmouth, we ask God that you give us open minds. We thank you, God, for the things that we have on the agenda. We thank you for our mayor and all the council members. And we thank you for the citizens who have come to share in the business of our city. Thank you for those that are watching on television. We thank you for the special things that shall be done here this day. Guide us, God, sweeten our words and give us, God, straightforward things that we need to hear today. We bless you and we thank you for allowing it to be. For it's in Jesus' name we ask it. Amen.
(inaudible)
Members of City Council, would you please indicate your presence electronically?
Six members of City Council are present.
Okay. Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of January the 13th, 2014, a call meeting of January 14th, 2014, a regular meeting of January 14th, 2014, and a call meeting of January the 27th, 2014. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically.
Okay. Moody?
Sure.
The minutes are adopted, six, zero.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Thirty-seven, excuse me, fourteen dash thirty-seven presentations. Our first presentation is a ceremonial loan agreement signing for the Fresnel lens. Lieutenant Scott McBride will come forward with brief comments, and we ask that Rear Admiral Steven Ratie join Mayor Wright at the table, please.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, members of City Council, City Manager Rowe, Vice Admiral Parker, and Rear Admiral Ratie. The Coast Guard is pleased to announce that the city of Portsmouth and the Coast Guard have renewed the lease agreement on the Hog Island Fresnel lens. Let this historic lens, which is on display along the waterfront, remain a shining example of the wonderful relationship that we share with this wonderful city. And on that note, I'll pass it to Ms. White, and we can carry on with the ceremony.
Thank you. At this time, we will have the signing, first by Rear Admiral Ratie, followed by Mayor Wright. Parker, if we'll just move right across the way here. And we invite the members of City Council to also join them. And at this time, Mr. Rowe will give us a little bit of information about the next presentation.
Ladies and gentlemen, I grew up in Portsmouth, and I can't ever remember a second that the Coast Guard was not here. And first, if I may take a point of personal privilege, as an old infantry officer and for those of us who on council who have served, Paige Cherry as a major in the artillery, Bill Moody in the Air Force, Curtis Edmonds in the Air Force, we thank you for your service to our country. We know what it means to be on duty 24 hours a day, and you truly are, and thank you for your service to our nation. We are a Coast Guard city, and although you claim the Eagle as your ship, we're claiming tonight it's our ship too. And we greatly appreciate you bringing it to Portsmouth and coming up the Elizabeth River. And while it was underway, we flew the river and took photographs of this great, great ship, and particularly as it was birthed at the foot of House Street. And it's our great pleasure to share this photograph with you, and we hope that it hangs in a special place in your offices. Thank you, sir.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, if you would each get one of the pictures for the presentation. You may want to show the audience.
This comes, by the way, with all of council signing with their best wishes to the Coast Guard on the back.
(applause)
Again, thank y'all very much. And as we take our seats, I won't put the Admiral here on the spot because, you know, I rarely can I keep a secret. And he mentioned this, I think it was Coast Guard Day.
We're ready to cook that. He said, "Mayor, I think, I think we can pull this off, but don't tell anybody. That's the worst thing you've ever told." First, I put it on Facebook, and I said, "Don't tell him I said it." But I think we're going to get to Eagle here, but I just want to say, before you take your seat, because I want to allow the Admiral to say a few words, because I have really enjoyed our relationship. You know, we're a Coast Guard city, and we act like it, or we're learning to act like it. And I'm always using as a barometer what the other Coast Guard cities are. I think we're number five in the list of maybe nine? I'm not sure, but we're up to about 12th or 13th? But I want to appreciate all of the hard work that we've done to make this partnership and this relationship happen. And as John said, you know, recognizing what we do day in and day out, and what all of our coasters do, and what you mean to City of Portsmouth, and this big collaboration that we have. We'd like to see it expand, but again, we want to be able to, at times like this, thank you for what you've done and allow you to say something to not only the audience here but everybody at home in the community. I know we're competing with the Olympics, so that may be a small thing. And I have never been put on the spot to speak next to my wife, but thank you very much. We thoroughly enjoy this relationship. If I make it past the first debate, then there's a good chance I'll be on the serving area. Yeah. I'm delighted to be here in this Coast Guard city. I told him that I had a pretty good idea, that it was pretty much a lock, and it was going to be something really unusual. So I was hedging my bets, it looked like the engineers did under promise, and then we were delivered on that side. But delighted to share America's tough ship with the citizens here, especially in Portsmouth. It's great to have. And, you know, she'd been down here before, she was across the river in that other city, which was a great venue to have all the tough ships that are very grand. I was delighted that you come down here and have just Eagle here to be this centerpiece right here on the waterfront. It's a great ship, and it's a great reflection of the heritage that we bring from the Coast Guard, and of course, it's a big part of our history as well. So bringing those two things together is just a help right here. And it doesn't hurt that the CEO of Eagle works for me, so that made it a little bit easier along the way. So we were delighted, in fact, racing, I got to sail down. It really is a pleasure. So our Coast Guard men and women enjoy living here. I'm excited about the number of people that have joined into the community activities. So it's a wonderful relationship that we can maintain. Thank you.
You can't leave without saying something, but I got to throw a plug in. You know, we have our Health and Postal Commission, we launched it, losing our half a million pounds. And Admiral Ratie, I think, first challenged me at the first event that I'll walk every mile you walk. Not only did he back it up, he brought half of his command with him, and we had quite a walk. And I believe the Admiral showed up as well, correct? So I wanted to give you a chance to say some things, but we do appreciate your service and the good district and all of the things that we've been able to do here under your leadership. We were actually, I missed your event at your house because I was out of town, but I understand from our commission that it was well done, and your wife and yourself was gracious folks. So I want to thank you for that, and more importantly, thank you for your leadership and you being here.
Well, thanks, sir. You know that we have many thousands of men and women in the Coast Guard that work in Portsmouth. And we have, I don't know how many, but we have at least a thousand that live in Portsmouth also. So all of those people, the Tidewater area is a great area, and particularly those of us that both work and live in Portsmouth enjoy the city. So I appreciate you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Mr. Rowe, your City Manager, and the members of the City Council for recognizing the Coast Guard's role in this community and the role of our nation in us keeping it safe. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Now, Admiral, you guys are welcome to stay. We have a lot of exciting things going on, but if you must leave, we'll understand. Good night again, and thank you very much. Let's give them a hand as they leave.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you please conclude your remarks at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. Public hearing, fourteen dash thirty-eight. Public hearing on a use permit application. U.P. 1401, Churchland. Dan Griffin, on behalf of Holiday House, is requesting to amend a use permit previously approved in April of 2009 to construct a 6,000-square-foot recreation center on the property at 4211 County Street. This property was approved in 2009 as a group home for up to 28 residents and included the expansion of their facilities and construction of a swimming pool. The recreation center is intended to serve only the residents of the group home. The property is owned by Portsmouth Children's Home, LLC, and is designed on the comprehensive plans generalized future land use map for low and medium single-family residential development. This property is located in the urban residential UR zoning district. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have Mr. Griffin here, and he's available if you have questions.
Sir?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, my name is Jonathan Hartley, Planning Administrator with the City Planning Department. The one item you have before you is the request that you just heard the clerk read. It is an application that was submitted by Dan Griffin on behalf of Holiday House. They obtained a permit, use permit, back in 2009, and as one of the conditions of that permit, it concluded a site plan showing what buildings were on the property, but it did not reflect the building that is now proposed. And that's the reason for having to amend the use permit that was approved in 2009. On the screen is a aerial photo of the general area with the Holiday House property shown in yellow. It is predominantly a residential neighborhood, but as you can see from this slightly larger photo, the Holiday House is essentially in the center-left, and most of the land area around the Holiday House really is undeveloped. It's either owned by Holiday House or the church, West Haven Baptist Church, or includes a ball field that's owned by the city. So it's where the recreation center is proposed, really doesn't impact directly any of the surrounding residences. This is a photo of the facility itself. It's the two lower one-story brick buildings taken from Caroline Avenue. The recreation center that is proposed would be at the rear of the property, essentially back towards the creek. And we worked with Mr. Griffin quite a bit on the sighting and location of that building. To the north of the property is the West Haven Baptist Church, and actually, Holiday House uses their parking lot as a shared parking for Holiday House during the weekdays. There is one residence immediately south of the property on the corner. This is a photograph of that structure. And then across Caroline Avenue, you have a number of residences that have joined the property. Again, what is before you is a request to amend the conditions. You have a copy of those conditions in your agenda packets. And the Planning Commission considered this item at their meeting on January 7th and recommended approval five to zero with the modified conditions. And that concludes my presentation, and I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item U.P. 14-01. And at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the specific public hearing, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item U.P. 1401.
Good afternoon. I'm Dan Griffin, architect for this much-needed project at the Holiday House. I think John has said it all. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Ronnie Ratliff, Director of the Holiday House, is here. Should you have any questions on his behalf? Ronnie?
Come on up, Mr. Rat.
But this is a much-needed project, and it's actually a requirement by the state for them to meet the standards for this fine facility. And I would like to state that I really appreciate the planning staff. We've worked together for several months on this project, and they've been very helpful with their suggestions and working with us to try to bring this thing to fruition. Thank you.
Okay. No worries.
Again, I want to say good evening to the mayor and the other City Council members. Truly, I've been a part of Holiday House for over 35 years, actually, and it is a jewel in the community. We've been doing some very good things with the intellectually disabled children that we serve. And again, all we're doing is expanding to meet their needs. Our licensing specialists from the state requires that there is adequate recreational space to meet the children's needs. So again, we're only expanding to, again, make sure they have the services that they need.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you both, and thank you for what you're doing in that community.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Good night. Madam Clerk?
Seeing no additional speakers coming forward, this public hearing is closed.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved, six, zero. City Managers' Report, 14-39. Adoption of an Ordnance Appropriating $102,100 in the FY 2013-14 General Fund for Alighting Improvements at the Children's Museum of Virginia and the Portsmouth Art and Cultural Center. Vision principle: Neighborhoods and sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted, six, zero. 14-40. Adoption of an Ordnance Accepting a Grant in the Amount of $18,794 from the United Way of Southampton Roads and Appropriating Said Funds in the FY 2013-14 Grants Fund for Use by the Department of Social Services to Provide Rent, Mortgage, and Utility Payment Assistance. Vision principles: Neighborhoods and sense of community. Quality of life and lifelong learning community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted, six, zero. 14-41. Adoption of an Ordnance Accepting a Grant in the Amount of $26,027 from the Virginia Department of Social Services and Appropriating Said Funds in the FY 2013-14 Grants Fund for Use by the Department of Social Services to Provide Resource Family and Family Services Training for Workers Within Child Welfare Programs. Vision principles: Neighborhoods and sense of community. Quality of life and lifelong learning community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted, six, zero. 14-43. Adoption of an Ordnance Accepting a Grant in the Amount of $8,245 from the Virginia Department of Social Services and Appropriating Said Funds in the FY 2013-14 Grants Fund for Use by the Department of Social Services to Provide Resource Family and Family Services Training for Workers Within Child Welfare Programs. Vision principles: Neighborhoods and sense of community. Quality of life and lifelong learning community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted, six, zero. 14-43. Adoption of an Ordnance Accepting a Grant in the Amount of $8,245 from the Virginia Department of Social Services and Appropriating Said Funds in the FY 2013-14 Grants Fund for Use by the Department of Social Services to Supplement Foster Care Services. Vision principles: Neighborhoods and sense of community. Quality of life and lifelong learning community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted, six, zero. 14-44. Adoption of an Ordnance Accepting a Grant in the Amount of $90,618 from the Virginia Department of Social Services and Appropriating Said Sum in the FY 2013-14 Grants Fund for Use by the Department of Social Services to Support Fire and Emergency Services in the City. Vision principle: Neighborhoods and sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted, six, zero. 14-46. Adoption of an Ordnance Accepting 2014 Aid to Locality Funds in the Amount of $272,472 from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs and Appropriating Said Sum in the FY 2013-14 Grants Fund to Support Fire and Emergency Services in the City. Vision principle: Neighborhoods and sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted, six, zero. 14-47. Adoption of an Ordnance Accepting a Citizen Preparedness Grant in the Amount of $14,910 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and Appropriating Said Sum in the FY 2013-14 Grants Fund for Use by Fire Department for Equipment, Supplies, and Training. Vision principles: Lifelong learning community. And neighborhoods and sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted, six, zero. 14-48. Adoption of an Ordnance Accepting a Grant in the Amount of $20,000 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and Appropriating Said Sum in the FY 2013-14 Grants Fund for Use by the Department of Social Services to Support Fire and Emergency Services in the City. Vision principle: Neighborhoods and sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted, six, zero. 14-49. Adoption of an Ordnance to Amend Chapter 37 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by Amending Section 37-132 thereof to Authorize a Charge .............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
...of those conditions in your, in your agenda packets. And the Planning Commission considered this item at their meeting on January 7th and recommended approval five to zero with the modified conditions. And that concludes my presentation, and I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP 14-01. And at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the specific public hearing, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item UP 14-01.
Dan Griffin, architect for this much-needed project at the Holiday House. I think John has said it all. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Ronnie Ratliff, director of the Holiday House is here. Should you have any questions on his behalf? Ronnie?
Come on up, Mr. Rat.
But this, this is a much-needed project, and it's actually a requirement by the state for them to meet the standards for this fine facility. And I would like to state that I really appreciate the planning staff. We've worked together for several months on this project, and they've been very helpful with their suggestions and working with us to try to bring this thing to fruition. Thank you.
Okay. No worries.
Again, I want to say good evening to the mayor and the other city council members. Truly, I've been a part of Holiday House for over thirty-five years, actually, and it is a jewel in the community. We've been doing some very good things with, with the intellectually disabled children that we serve. And again, all we're doing is expanding to meet their needs. Our licensing specialists from the state requires that there is adequate recreational space to meet the children's needs. So, again, we're only expanding to, again, make sure they have the services that they need.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you both. And thank you for what you're doing in our community.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Good night. Ma'am Clerk.
Seeing no additional speakers coming forward, this public hearing is closed.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is approved six-zero. City Managers' Report 14-39, adoption of an ordinance appropriating $102,100 in the FY 2013-14 General Fund for lighting improvements at the Children's Museum of Virginia and the Portsmouth Art and Cultural Center. Vision, principles, neighborhoods, and sense of community, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted six-zero. 14-40, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $18,794 from the United Way of Southampton Roads and appropriating said funds in the FY 2013-14 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to provide rent, mortgage, and utility payment assistance. Vision, principles, neighborhoods, and sense of community, quality of life, and lifelong learning community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted six-zero. 14-41, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $26,027 from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2013-14 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to promote independent living and education. Vision, principles, neighborhoods, and sense of community, quality of life, and lifelong learning community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted six-zero. 14-42, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $180,000 from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2013-14 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to provide resource family and family services training for workers within child welfare programs. Vision, principles, neighborhood, and sense of community, quality of life, and lifelong learning community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six-zero. 14-43, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $8,245 from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2013-14 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to supplement foster care services. Vision, principles, neighborhoods, and sense of community, quality of life, and lifelong learning community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six-zero. 14-44, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $90,618 from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2013-14 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to provide supportive and preventive services to families. Vision, principles, neighborhoods, and sense of community, quality of life, lifelong learning community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six-zero. 14-45, adoption of an ordinance accepting 2014 aid to locality funds in the amount of $268,395 from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs and appropriating said sum in the FY 2013-14 Grants Fund to support fire and emergency services in the city. Vision, principle, neighborhoods, and sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six-zero. 14-46, adoption of an ordinance accepting 2014 aid to locality funds in the amount of $272,472 from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs and appropriating said sum in the FY 2013-14 Grants Fund to support fire and emergency services in the city. Vision, principle, neighborhoods, and sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted six-zero. 14-47, adoption of an ordinance accepting a citizen preparedness grant in the amount of $14,910 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said sum in the FY 2013-14 Grants Fund for use by Fire Department for equipment, supplies, and training. Vision, principles, lifelong learning community, and neighborhoods, and sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six-zero. 14-48, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $20,000 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said amount in the FY 2013-14 Grants Fund to enhance the Portsmouth Hazmat Team's equipment, training, and technical expertise. Vision, principle, neighborhoods, and sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six-zero. 14-49, adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter 37 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by amending Section 37-132 thereof to authorize a charge to taxicab passengers for use of a toll facility. Vision, principle, efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Second. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six-zero. 14-50, adoption of an ordinance amending the city's classification and pay plan to revise the allowable number of hours for part-time employees during a work week. Vision, principle, efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six-zero. 14-51, adoption of an ordinance appropriating in the Other Funds Grants Fund classification of the 2013-14 Education Fund, the sum of $3,000 awarded to the schools by the Career Switcher New Teacher Mentor Grant Program, Award Program of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Vision, principles, quality of life, and lifelong learning community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six-zero. 14-52, adoption of an ordinance appropriating in the Other Funds Grants Fund classification of the FY 2013-14 Education Fund, the sum of $2,500 awarded to the schools by the National Board of Certification and Senate Award Grant Program of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Vision, principles, quality of life, and lifelong learning community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six-zero. 14-53, adoption of an ordinance appropriating the sum of $844,019 in unspent FY 2012-13 State Textbook Funds and the Other Funds Textbook Fund Classification of the FY 2013-14 Education Fund. Vision, principles, quality of life, and lifelong learning community. Electronic roll call, and we have a speaker, Mr. Mark Godoldik-Yutrowski.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow citizens. There is a famous saying that the power to tax is the power to destroy, and I think that the power to appropriate has comparable destructive effects. In this case, I'm wondering why this issue is even before council, because if we're talking about state textbook funds, I'm not sure how those funds should ever have come to the city. A lot of state code has been quoted to us in the course of preceding work sessions since at least December. And so, we've all been told, we the public have been told, that monies under, under state code, monies that the council has appropriated to the schools, at the end of a fiscal year, if they are unspent, they return to the city for reallocation. But state textbook funds are not within council's purview, as I understand it. State textbook funds should not have come to council, as I understand it. Now, I'm not a lawyer. There may be some principle of law that I'm not familiar with, and I'm willing to be educated on that. But it seems to me something is amiss here. Why would the city be the repository of state textbook funds? The other, the other thing that mystifies me is why the school board has not, now that we have a responsible attorney general focused on Virginia issues, why they would not have sought an attorney general's opinion about whether city council and city management have overstepped their bounds in terms of their interactions with the school board? Because as I understand it, there is a state prohibition against city councils interfering in matters that are the purview of the school board. And the bullying and intimidation that I have seen through the appropriation process on behalf of the city have raised red flags in my mind. Were I a member of the school board, I would be encouraging my colleagues to ask for that kind of review from the attorney general to see if a line has been crossed. In short, in sum, rather, I haven't been short, I'm wondering why we're having this conversation at all, why the funds were not disposed of in a different manner, why the city is involved in it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to call on Mr. Rowe to make comment for the, for the speaker and for the public's benefit on why we are making this appropriation.
Yes, sir. Excuse me. I turned my light on. I think my mic is on. First, Mark said he's not an attorney, and that's probably why he doesn't understand the provisions of State Code Section 15.2, 2506, which requires even for schools that city council appropriate all funds. In fact, the second paragraph of that section says it mentions schools. So just like you appropriated the grant funds this evening, you appropriate all the funds that schools spend. They cannot spend a penny without those funds being appropriated by a city council. Second, technically, these funds never came back, but, because they are state funds. But before they can spend them in 2013-14, you have to appropriate them.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
There are no additional speakers on this item?
Move adoption.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six-zero. 14-54, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an easement with Cox Communications Hampton Roads across a portion of the former DeS Inc. site along Columbia Street. Vision, principle, robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no additional speakers.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six-zero. New Business, 14-55, Boards and Commissions, Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mayor, members of council, the Personnel Committee makes the following recommendations for appointments and one dismissal. Appointments, Behavioral Healthcare Services Advisory Board, Beverly Thomas; Downtown Design Committee, Tracy Jackson; Library Board, Vernon Elliott and Jason Rich; Museum and Fine Arts Commission, Seth Morris; and one dismissal, Historic Preservation Commission, Tony Goodwin.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six-zero. 14-56, item submitted by council members. The item we have before you is adoption of a resolution confirming a declaration of emergency made by the city manager for the January 28th, 29th, 2014 snowstorm. Electronic roll call, and I have a registered speaker, Mr. Mark Godoldik-Yutrowski.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow citizens. I rise again to repeat a point that I have repeated many times, but judging by the fact that we're, there were a great number of people in our region who didn't realize tolling was going to start on February 1st, I don't take for granted that my having said this before has reached sufficient number of years. So therefore, forgive me for repeating myself, but I think people need to be cognizant of this. Whenever an emergency declaration occurs in the city, the emergency manager, who may be the city manager or his designate, has certain extraordinary powers. Effectively, the Constitution of the United States and of the Commonwealth of Virginia is shoved aside because of an emergency. Now, our emergency ordinance came out of the post-Katrina era, in which a number of city officials got together and decided that certain things were necessary to deal with crises, natural and human-created. But I believe that the ordinance goes too far, in that it allows the emergency manager to commandeer private property. The emergency manager can take for public purpose, without any review, until the emergency is ended, personal vehicles, commercial vehicles, commercial buildings, and personal residences, if that person deems it to be in the interests of the public. There is no recourse to court until afterwards. The law allows for recompense, but there's no process that a citizen can, can use without going to court if the recompense is inadequate. There are liability issues. If the city takes your vehicle and the vehicle is damaged, there are issues in terms of your insurance versus the city's insurance. And I remind everyone that the city, as a subdivision of the Commonwealth, is considered sovereign, which means you can't sue the city unless the city allows you to do so. So for this reason, I believe the ordinance needs to be modified to remove those provisions. There should be a provision that allows the city to apply to individuals and businesses for the use of their property, but the person who owns that property should be the final arbiter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Members of council, there are no additional speakers on this item?
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six-zero. Are there any additional items submitted by council members?
Yes, ma'am. Let me first of all start by saying congratulations and go USA to all of our Olympians that are over in Sochi, competing and doing a fine job. I think as of today, the medal count was six. I think we were in third or fourth place. The Canadians, as usual, dominate the Winter Games, had about nine. So, but we've still got quite a few events to go, and I couldn't resist these because they've been all over NBC. And this weekend, Wavy TV 10 did some commercials with their crew, and I thought it was nice, and I didn't have any, so I went over to Wavy and asked, could I borrow these for tonight? And their promotions department was very accommodating, and I have to return them tomorrow. But, so if anybody would like to put on the mittens and take a photo before I take them back tonight, so we can send those off to make sure our troops and, I mean, our Olympians know that we are rooting for them 100 percent. It is great to see those young people performing a task of a lifetime and all of the jitters and all of the attention going on there. So I get excited this, every four years when we do this type of thing, and to see all the hard work that those people put in to be able to represent our country. And I think it's great that they handle that grace under pressure, under fire, as they call it. But secondly, I also want to congratulate Captain Angela Abrogati. She retired from the United States Navy, 26 years of service, and I was honored. She requested that I come and say some words and present her with a proclamation. And the Abrogati family is a huge family here in Portsmouth, and there are members here at the St. James Episcopal Church. And she is a Portsmouth native and graduated from Manor High School, and it was a packed house over at N O B last Friday. And it was truly amazing to listen to the Admiral speak of the work that that young lady has done. And she went to Norfolk State University, majored in information management and, and the things she's done for our country. And so it's always great to, our citizens are getting recognized, whether it's retirement or, or being recognized for great achievements. And again, I want to congratulate her on her retirement and wish her Godspeed. Also, this, last week, we had a conference here in the city of Portsmouth. The Mid-Atlantic Black Law Students Association had a conference here where they had 200 African-American students, law students here for the week. And it culminated Saturday with a, I guess, mock trials, where they came over to our new courthouse, and our judges, the circuit court judges, were the actual judges, and they had cases where they were applying different law. And it was pretty amazing. I went Saturday and spent a couple of hours over there Saturday morning watching these future lawyers debate back and forth, points dealing with gun laws and drugs and things of that nature. And so I want to thank our judges for participating and being so gracious. And I think, Mr. Wilson, you mentioned that we had someone from our staff help them as
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. Deputy City Attorney Sharon Cordell worked with Circuit Court Clerk Cynthia Morrison on, on part of the program. She participated in it and enjoyed it.
Okay. And they, and believe it or not, out of those 200 students that were here, and they were here for about a week, I think only about three or four were from right-hand Hampton Road. So they came from up north, whatever consisted of their Mid-Atlantic region. And, and all of the law schools throughout this country, they, they represented. And so it was, it was nice. They had a kickoff at the Children's Museum. They thought that was very fascinating, and they spent a great deal of time walking around and looking at all of the things we had there. And I was playing part-time curator and making sure they understood what all of those different things were. But again, they went throughout our city last week, and we want to thank them for choosing Portsmouth and, and having their conference here. And then finally, I've got a couple of announcements. Saturday at 11 o'clock, we're going to have a polar walk, Walk with the Mayor, at Hoffler Creek Wildlife Preserve. That's at 11 o'clock. Anybody that want to challenge the mayor and the dead winner to a nice polar walk, I look forward to seeing you there at 11. And again, Hoffler Creek Wildlife Preserve has a lot of great things to offer, and it really is a place to get away right here in Portsmouth and see some of the nature's natural habitats and natural things that exist here, right in the city of Portsmouth. And I'm pleased to participate in that walk and encourage all of you to join me there. Now, conflicting with that walk, we have a Buffalo Soldiers Parade that starts at 10 o'clock. And so if you can't make it to the walk and challenge the mayor... And so if you can't make it to the walk and challenge the mayor, then you can go, I think at I C Norcom is where they start off, at Elizabeth, yeah, at I C Norcom at 10 o'clock, and we're going to have that Buffalo Soldiers Parade there. And then finally, our community meeting is next week at Woodrow Wilson High School. What date is that? Is that?
That's the 18th.
Yep, the 18th. What is that? Is that Tuesday?
Yes, sir.
That's Tuesday at 7:00 with Wilson.
Tuesday at 7:00. Now, that's a makeup, because we had the council the last time because of the snow. And finally, speaking of snow, I want to applaud our manager and our employees and our citizens for the great job that we all did during the snowstorm. That's cooperating and listening and watching the radio and television, staying off the road so we can get out and do the things that we need to do to make sure the place is safe for everyone. We received quite a few positive comments for the yeoman's work that was done. It was tough. We haven't had one of those in a while, and a lot of times, you don't put that type of thing in perspective until you look on the national news and see what happened in Atlanta, or somewhere where there wasn't the right coordination, or certain things didn't happen. And you can't underscore that, that there are people that work for this city and do all they can, and in times like that, going around the clock to make sure that we're safe, and even making the calls with counseling, work, and schools and all of that for our safety. So again, I want to thank Mr. Manager and all of his staff and our employees, but more importantly, our citizens for cooperating and helping us through these times. With that, Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. In Atlanta, it was more a case of what didn't happen, what? A couple of things. In fact, one of Burl Stromberg, who a lot of you know, our Assistant Attorney for the city of Portsmouth, I was looking through a newspaper here and see where Burl was elected President of the Hebrew Academy, Academy of Tidewater recently. That's quite an honor for Burl, and just wanted to publicly congratulate him on that. George?
Absolutely.
Here's the article. I'll pass it down. And the mayor, myself, and Vice Mayor Cherry, I guess a couple of weeks ago now, attended the little service dedication of a marker for the former, location of the former Portsmouth Catholic High School downtown. And Elizabeth was with us as well.
And it was cold.
And it was extremely cold. It was beyond cold. It was freezing. But I was really surprised that the number of former
Students.
Students and graduates of Portsmouth Catholic High School attended on that freezing cold day. And that's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, very good. And if there, anyone else? All right, and before we move on, I do want to say one other announcement. We have our state of the recycling, a six-month anniversary. It's been six months since we launched this recycling program. We're proud of everyone for doing their part. But Thursday, February 20th, at 5:00, we're going to be over at the Wesley Community Center at 1701 Elm Avenue. We'll be there from 5:00 to 8:00. So please come in, and we'll give everybody a nice update and briefing and all types of other things, good things about our recycling program. I got to tell you, speaking of recycling, I get a lot of, I call them smarty pants, that we're doing a great job recycling, but they want to know, what are we going to do with all this money we're saving, Mayor? And I've shared with them, and I think we've done it several times, that we've got about $2.5 million invested in that program. And based on, I think, 20% participation, we would break even in about five years. And I think we were averaging now somewhere around 50%, 55% participation. If we keep that up, then naturally, it won't take us five years to break even. And then once we do that, then we can fight over where the money goes. So I got quite a few questions, emails, and letters, so I figured I'd make that announcement publicly. So give us another year, keep recycling, let's keep that number at 55%, 60% level, and be amazing the things that we'll show as far as yielding with that. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 14-57, report on pending items, Ms. Bernadette Hogg.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Bernadette Hogg, City Embusman, and would like to give you the report on the non-agenda speakers and pending items for the council meeting on January 24th, 2014. There were five non-agenda speakers at the council meeting on January 14th, 2014. Two of the speakers required action by staff. Frances Jones requested funding information for the new behavioral health care building. Deputy City Manager Brandon Godfrey provided Ms. Jones the requested information by email on January 15th, 2014. Barry Shepherd with Safeway Cab Company requested City Council amend Chapter 37 of the code to authorize a charge to taxi cab passengers for use of a toll facility. This amendment was approved tonight. That concludes my report, but I want to tell you about a couple upcoming events.
Please.
We are bringing coffee talk back with the manager. First one will be Wednesday, February 19th, from noon to 2:00 p.m. at Station 9, which is Hodgson Ferry Road. We'll have the second one Thursday, February 27th, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at Station 12, which is Cedar Road. And also, we are having Portsmouth Neighborhood Academy in April, and the dates of that will follow shortly.
All right, thank you.
14-58, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Randy Bailey.
Members of council, this is the first time that I've come up here to speak. I've been living here for four years since I came back from Florida. I would like to recognize some individuals in the city, the first being the fire, rescue, and EMS personnel, who are the hardest-working individuals in this city. And I'd like to thank them for what they do. The second person I would like to thank this evening is Madam Clerk, as she has to field all the disparagey that comes from the shenanigans that come from this dais. The next thing that I would like to comment is a quote from President Harry S. Truman. "If you can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen." If somebody says something about you, it's constructive criticism. I hope that you would take it that way. Mr. Cherry, Mr. Moody, Mr. Rowe, I thank you for your service. I'm a retired naval officer. I understand where you come from. I'm also a disabled vet. Tunnel tolls kill me. I refuse to get an easy pass. So I drive down George Washington, cut across Canal, and I go up Military Highway to get to Norfolk. Mr. Rowe, I congratulate you for your steadfastness on the budget. I feel that you have things well in hand, and I hope you continue along that route. There are several things in this city that are just plain wrong, and I see it every day. And a lot of it comes from in this chamber. You guys have really got to get together and listen to the citizens. A lot of times in the last four years, I've heard people up here, they have made comments, and the next thing I hear is, we have a motion, we have a second, oh, we have 7-0, bang, down comes the hammer. Everything that was said up here has been negated. Some thought should be put into this. Back in 98, the council voted for tunnel tolls. Yes, you did. Only a couple of you were up there, and I'm pleased to say Mr. Moody had guts enough to vote no. But still and all, the State Board of Transportation took it the other way. Now we have tolls. And just because the governor lowered it for three years, it's not going to stay there. It's going to go back up, and it's going to rise. And you can bet with inflation and everything else, it's not going to be a normal rise, because people haven't been using the tunnel. And once the tolls go up, less people are going to use it, the more the state's going to raise it, and the more it's going to come out of your tax dollars. Betting on a casino to pay for it, out of every $100 that comes out of casino, you're going to get a dime. Out of that dime, you're going to get a penny. And the school board's going to want half of that penny. We really got to get together and think of something instructive to put in this city. Half of it's vacant. The sign of the times in this city right now is for sale, for rent, or foreclosed, or condemned. There needs to be a change. There's a lot of cottage industries, there's a lot of things that can come up, that people can put together, that can be done in this city. Everybody complains about the homeless population. I've seen them on the corner of Hatton and Queen Street, 50, 60 people. Only 10 of them are homeless. The rest of them can't hang out in the government housing areas during the day, because they're not supposed to be there. So they sit in the corners and they drink. The police department shuffles them from corner to corner, because they don't know what to do with them, other than keep them out of Old Town. Somebody has to get creative and come up with some solutions. I'm more than happy to help. Every time I find a veteran on the corner, I found one at the tunnel entrance that had a sign said homeless. I took him to the VA hospital and put him in a program. I'm more willing to do that. My time, my money, my gas. And if I have to do that one at a time for those guys, I will. But something has to be done for everybody else. Building all these new apartments and condominiums, this isn't going to be Sunrise, Arizona, where it's a retirement fair community, because people aren't going to pay tolls to be retired. I thank you for your time, and you have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. And thank you for your first-time visit to the council. Don't let it be your last. Appreciate your comments, and thank you for your service to our country. And for the record, I think you missed Dr. Edmonds. He's also a veteran. What branch, sir?
Air Force.
Air Force, all right. Thank you again.
Mr. Clyde Toler.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Rowe, City Manager, good sign. Now, Ms. White is sad. Good evening. Clyde Toler, Paul Beal. First, I have heard Ms. White read what I should come up here and how I should behave. It's amazing how you behave tonight. You're not talking when we're up here talking to you. You're not talking. You're paying attention. And I think I should make an amendment to this thing where she read for us to be nice, that you also should be nice to the speaker, because sometime last year, you have spoke real harsh to people, because they made comments. And you have talked to them kind of a little bad. But this year, we doing good, so let's keep it like this. Okay. Now, at this time, I would like to bring before you, on South Street, Mr. Rowe, if you please, on South Street, going towards Swanson Housing Area, there's a fence about 50 feet long with a tree stump hanging over the street. Been there for years, it need to be cut down so that people will walk out in the street when you're going up South Street. Make sure that the tree stump is moved, because that's real dangerous at night. They don't like to walk around that back street, around the back of that place. They got to come up and down the street where the lights are. That tree stump need to be moved across the street with the people pushing the kids that go in the church. The next thing, at Godman Street and County Street, Godman Street and Hive Street, please do something about those potholes. And at Frederick Boulevard and Turnpike, where C and D is, do something there. Hey, I'm driving a $50-some thousand car, and I hate to knock my front end out of line running over these bad places in the street like this for the tax that I pay on this car. Costs $1,000-some on a brand-new car like that, and then got to get the front end line. When I run down the street and all of a sudden, boom, I'm dropping in a hole, I want you to do something about that. And I think you should do something about that as soon as possible. Do something about that, maybe look into that and get these places, bad places like that in the street fixed up. But I go back to the casino. I want that casino to come here. All right, if I gamble and go to hell, okay, so what? Somebody else is going, because guess what? You doing something maybe worse than what I'm doing. So we're burned together. But anyway, if Portsmouth don't get that casino, it's going to Norfolk. Now, looking at TV, I see where the councilman over there is going to the governor about our tunnel. Where was he when we was fighting this? Why wasn't y'all dealing with them? You see, if you don't get this casino here, you know what's going to happen? Norfolk going to grab it, because that's what they doing with that ferry. You going to find a beautiful ferry. You see the cruise ship that came back? This is all the setup. Portsmouth better do something, because I'm tired of paying high taxes, and I see my money going down the drain. And Mr. Rowe, thank you for bringing that school boat up. A six-year-old, a seven-year-old kid can see that. Now he's going to retire and get away with all this damage that he done did. How you going to spend my money for 2014, when you ain't got the new budget for the spending? Hey, this is a good thing you did. If anybody don't understand that, something wrong with you. But council, y'all got to step up to the plate, and you got to do better this year than you did last year. No more fighting among yourselves, because if you do, I'm going to tell you about it. Now, I'm not going to bring up who did this last year and that year, because that's over with. To all the ladies, Happy Valentine Day. If you don't have a sweetheart, you got me. So everybody have a Happy Valentine and have a nice day.
Thank you, Sergeant Major. Or should we say sweetheart?
I broke your back.
Our next speaker is Ms. Denise Mayo. Alcina Mayo, thank you.
That's a tough act to follow. Good evening, Mayor Wright, and fellow council members and citizens of Portsmouth. My name is Denise Alcina Mayo, and I'm the Executive Director of the Tide Water Winds. I am genuinely humbled to have this honor to speak to you today. Thank you for allowing me these few minutes to tell you about my organization. I really just wanted to express to you who we are, what we are trying to do in Portsmouth, and why I am here tonight. The Tide Water Winds is a sousa-style band. We were founded 29 years ago in Norfolk with the vision to bring classic music to all in the Hampton Roads community. We provide between 16 and 20 free concerts during the month of July in Norfolk, Virginia Beach, Portsmouth, and Chesapeake, with up to 55 different musicians. Our audiences are mainly comprised of the elderly with limited disposable income and families with young children. But our mission is threefold. First, to provide quality, professional live music to our communities and to those who may not otherwise have the opportunity to partake. This allows incredible events for the elderly to still enjoy the music of their youth and to introduce young children to classic tunes who may not have this exposure in our schools today. Also, as we are a sousa band and follow tradition, half of our programs honor the military and help to build and strengthen a greater sense of patriotism. Two, to encourage the future musicians of our region to grow into professional musicians willing to pledge a sense of responsibility to their community. We have maintained a wonderful internship program whereby, after auditioning, high school and college students who qualify will play with the ensemble throughout the entire summer program. This is an awe-inspiring experience for all, and it ensures a continuation of the development of future musicians for groups like the Winds to continue to provide free concerts for our communities. And lastly, to provide an arena for our musicians to continue with their profession and to receive compensation. While we continue to pay our musicians, we are continuing to contribute to the economies of our area. Although I am not originally from the Tide Water area, I have been here since 1975, and I have grown to love it. It is important to me to provide It is important to me to provide the same opportunities throughout the region, and we notice that Portsmouth residents often do not have the same options within their own cities. This year, the Winds has decided to put forth our efforts into growing within the Portsmouth community. Recently, our board expanded, and we now have a lifelong resident and businessman from Portsmouth who is also joining Mr. Scott Morgan, who resides in Portsmouth. Additionally, this year, we will perform two concerts as opposed to always having just performed one concert at Willett Hall. We aim to increase that in the coming years so that we will have one concert each week of our month-long summer season. But to do this, I need the support of the whole community. Our concerts generally run a cost of $10,000 to $12,000 per concert, depending on the venue. Although we do receive grants and many individual donations, we really need more local business and corporate sponsorships. As I am not personally familiar with the business leaders of this city, I wanted to ask for council's advice on who would be interested in participating to assist with the endeavors of the Tide Water Winds. Our goal is to bring joy and entertainment in a safe family environment into Portsmouth, adding to the quality of life of the citizens here. Our programs during the summer reached close to 8,000 and another 2,000 during the holidays. Business participation in our advertising affords a great deal of exposure at a reasonable cost while contributing to the support of a valuable asset to the community. Please help me to grow the cultural advantages for the residents of the city of Portsmouth. I've included in your packet last year's programs as well as the calendar for the upcoming season. If you know of anybody who's interested in these areas and wants to be a true part of a community effort benefiting the citizens of Portsmouth, please advise me so that I may contact them. I appreciate this opportunity to share with you the story of the Tide Water Winds, and hopefully now you have a clearer understanding of who we are, what we are doing in Portsmouth, and why I have come for your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayo. Vice Mayor Cherry.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you, mayor. And thank you, ma'am, for coming and bringing this valuable information. I think we ought to start out by linking you up with our Director of Marketing, Mr. Pace. I don't think he's here tonight.
There he is.
Is he here? There he is. And he can help you get your message out and your calendar and all your events out to the general public. And we can start from there and linking you up with people who might be assistance to you.
Wonderful. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Edmonds.
Vice Mayor Cherry said exactly what I was gonna ask.
Okay, Ms. Randall.
I would just like to say to the young lady, I'm so happy to hear this. At one time, we had the orchestra here. You probably may have heard the name, Mrs. Geraldine Hardy, who started the children when the time they were in third or fourth grade. I'm a young lady with gray hair. But the thing was, those children grew up on, with the orchestra and the strings and the violins. And I'm so happy to see that coming back in, because the culture was so much greater and richer for those children as they went on. And I'm happy to see that we are now revitalizing. But it was something that, they traveled all over the United States, and they even traveled to Europe. So you're like the new bird, but something that is needed and much in the cultural development of our children.
That's right.
If I can help you in any way, I'll be happy to. My friend and daughter played with that orchestra.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Will sit, Ms. Randall. Thank you, ma'am.
The next speaker is Ms. Donna Si.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si. I live in the Woodbine Farms section of Churchland. Principle of Liberty Seven: The proper role of government is to protect equal rights, not provide equal things. Our individual unalienable rights for self-governance have been replaced by the collective mentality. Self-governance has been replaced by political parties and special interest groups' desire for absolute control over the individual. The three variables that have allowed this collective control are government officials, the media, and special interest groups such as political parties, industrial magnates, and activists. The fourth variable that has taken away our unalienable rights and our civic authority involves the citizen's herd mentality. The three things causing the herd mentality are an entitlement mentality, apathy toward civic engagement, and a lack of maturity and thinking. The entitlement mentality of the citizens is contrary to self-governance and civic authority. The government uses its position to redistribute wealth by providing handouts to the masses who demand it. It's the way government maintains power and control. By the centralization of government power, the people will get what they want. The people will continue to grant power to the centralized government in order to keep getting entitlements. In this way, the herd and the government engage in the practice of the redistribution of wealth regardless of the fact that neither has the authority to do so. Entitlement comes at a cost. Gerald Ford, in August 12, '74, speech to a joint session of Congress, said, "A government big enough to give you everything you want is a government big enough to take from you everything you have." The entitlements become a method to socially construct centralization of power. The second thing that disrupts civic authority is citizens' apathy and lack of citizen engagement. Citizens' engagement maintains our rights. Therefore, citizens' apathy is a detriment to those rights. In fact, the only real way for the government to usurp power is through citizens' apathy. Thomas Jefferson said, "The natural course is for liberty to yield and government to gain ground." Government will gain ground when there is no civic engagement. Government uses intimidation to prevent citizen engagement. People are intimidated by the process and don't believe they can or should inject their beliefs into the public arena. The third thing that disrupts civic authority is lack of maturity of the herd. Youth, maturity, knowledge, idealism, and peer values all play a part in determining the current and future situation of self-governance. There's an old saying that good judgment comes from experience, and experience comes from bad judgment. The lack of a sense of responsibility for self, the idea that I know it all, and a subsequent rebellion against personal responsibility may contribute to the lack of maturity. There is an unqualified idealism of youth. When children are not challenged, they tend to collapse in their current mental state. When they are not challenged to the next level of responsibility, they lack critical thinking skills. They submit to ignorant reasoning, ideology, and give up willingly to the idea that the role of government is to take care of them. The way we raise our children partnered with value system have a direct impact on self-governance. Many children today are being taught that we live in a democracy instead of a republic. They end up believing that democracy, majority rule, or tyranny of the masses is a good thing, as opposed to the idea that a republic, protection of the few, is what is important to maintain in our society. The youth idea of democracy then leads them to think that government exists to take care of the herd, giving them things instead of guaranteeing equal rights. It is this misunderstanding of the role of government which helps to preserve the centralization of power. It is important that we, the people, teach our children about performing their civic duty, their responsibility to act in a self-government capacity such as voting, and also teach them how to exercise the civic authority, their power to hold instituted government accountable. The herd mentality is what the government promotes. We, the people, need to remember our unalienable rights come from our Creator, not the government. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor. Honorable Representatives, Council Members, and Community. My name's Athena Jones. I live at 600 Yorktown Avenue, and I am here yet again in opposition of the behavioral health care facility that is gonna be built, four-hundred-and-ninety feet from IC Norcom High School, within a community that exists two domestic violence shelters, two shelters for social services, and then the main social service building as well as a homeless facility. You know, it's interesting, because I keep listening to a lot of the things that are going on in the city of Portsmouth, and, you know, we always come down to taxes, 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 taxes. And so one of the things I wanted to address tonight as well was the fact that, yes, we have to, my mom went ahead and bought the EZ Pass, and unfortunately, I noticed that in the EZ Pass, there was a fifty-cent charge per month. If you saw it, bought it from the state of Virginia, there's a fifty-cent charge per month. So please, people, know that you will be charged fifty cents extra, which is an additional tax for something that is required, which is another tax, to go in and out of the tunnels. Thank you, tunnels and those who voted for it. Another thing I wanted to talk about was the $10.4 million bond. And it was interesting, because I didn't quite understand how that process worked or where the money came from. I know that the questions were asked earlier, and I know that the conversation did happen between my mom and the U. Representative, which is really great. However, when we're talking about a bond, from what I understand, the money comes from this entity. I'm not sure what entity that is. And then that money is almost like a loan that is now paid back from the taxes of the people in the neighborhoods or in that community. And so now this is an additional tax that we're paying for something that we don't want to have in our community, that our property taxes for the people that own businesses or, excuse me, homes in that area now have to pay for. So now we're taxed fifty cents extra for something we don't want. We're taxed to go through the tunnel for something we don't want. I have the behavioral health care services facility that is in front of my house that you guys believe will be built, and as, you know, if nothing doesn't change, that will be built. Again, taxes paying for that facility, four-hundred-and-ninety feet from IC Norcom, with a 75% high school graduation rate. And what are we getting in return? What are the community and the citizens getting in return for continuing to be taxed? Because we've also discussed the fact that Portsmouth continues to be taxed the highest out of the areas that we have. So again, what is the community getting in return? Right? What are the benefits? We talk about the casino, and I have deep concerns about the casino as well, because the reality is, the location is never steadfast, nor is the money ever steadfast. So if you don't have a good thing, and it's not 100% written in paper, almost in blood, then you can't depend on it. You know, I had the opportunity to meet with the governor a couple of weeks ago, actually last week, Lieutenant Governor, as well as Attorney General, because that's what I do. And I talked to him about what was going on in Portsmouth, about the behavioral health care services, and how important it is that we build a community within the city of Portsmouth and not be forgotten. Because out of the whole entire conversation, I was saying, "Please remember Portsmouth," because we have a tendency to be forgotten. So we have all these taxes taken out of the community, businesses are leaving the community. I can't even watch a movie in the city of Portsmouth. And the citizens are getting what in return? What are we getting in return? So unfortunately, the jobs that you guys have up there are very important. They're very important, because people are depending on you to get something that they invest in, in return. You know, it's interesting, I only have a couple of seconds left, and I wanted to do, write a quote, actually say a quote. And the quote says, "The only difference between death and taxes is that death doesn't get worse every time Congress meets." And Will Rogers was the one that said that. You guys have a good evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Frances Jones. Remember, my name is Frances Jones. I live at 600 Yorktown Avenue. Why I said, "Remember, my name is Frances Jones?" Because at the last meeting, the deputy, city deputy manager approached me and says, "Hi, are you Mrs. Black?" Now, I get up here every time, and I said, "Hi, my name is Frances Jones." Let's show you how much we're listening to one another. How about that? Because I would never have mistaken Mr. Jeffries for John Elro. Now, let me get to the topic. I did receive the email from Mr. Guthrie. And did he answer my question? No. I asked for Pacific. He gave me no more than what I already knew. I know how the General Assembly works. I took constitutional law. Okay? So there's certain things that you guys don't know. So for that reason, I'm standing before you, one, as a taxpayer, two, as a homeowner, three, as a citizen. And it seems like everything falls on a deaf ear. But like I said, 2014 is gonna be a great year. Some of you will probably still be there, others may not. Because, see, the citizen of Portsmouth is learning more about the city council members now than they ever before. Why? Because, see, before, I never had a reason to come down here to witness you at your best. So now, you all are exposed. The voters will know who to vote for in 2014, 16, or whatever year that comes up now. Why? Because you refuse to listen to the people. See, I was one of those voters. I've been there since 95, never voted. My children voted when we lived in New York. When the old level went back and forth, they were in the booth with me. They know the booth with me. They know how to vote. As little children, they were taught. And yes, I had the opportunity to go to meet with the governor too on the 28th, but I didn't go. Yes. So the main thing is this, is that, is to listen. I asked specific questions. Did I get specific answers? The answer was no. Did I bother to call him back? I figure since he didn't answer my first question, why should I bother asking him the second question? See, I've learned in my job, I have to be absolute. That's government service, because I learned that. And on my job, I used to work for the Air Force. Okay? Now I work for the Navy. But the bottom line is this: You need to listen to the people. Listen to what the people are saying. It's very important for you to listen. That's all I have to say. But the next meeting, you will have facts about what I found. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Good evening and Happy New Year, Mayor and Council, and to the citizens of Portsmouth, Happy New Year. I'm not gonna leave you alone about my multicultural center. It's a new year, so we gonna get started all over again. That's the first want I want, but by my wanting, so do so many others. Our children need somewhere to go. I was sitting there thinking what I was gonna say to you, and I decided I would do this little thing I do with myself. I live in a city surrounded by water, and I thought about this show I saw one night. And I decided that from now on, instead of putting my address as Portsmouth, Virginia, I'm gonna put down Dome, Virginia. It's a show on TV that comes on, say, Under the Dome. This dome fell down on this city, and it cut it off from everything else. And with these toes, that's what's happening to us right now. We are sitting all by ourselves, all by ourselves. And we got a council that pretend to want to work together. We got a- We got a council that's not listening to the people that live here and that say. Then I thought about this other program. It was called Storybrooke. It was about a lot of little characters that come out of Storybook land, and tried to come and create their own little city, where everything happened according to the storybook, but they named it Storybrooke. So I didn't know what name I wanted to call Portsmouth anymore. But what I do know about Portsmouth is I live here. I love it. I heard someone mention a little while ago, you see signs, I do, all over, for sale, for rent, foreclosed. I even been here and heard people talking about I want to sell my house. I wish them luck, because don't nobody want to buy in Portsmouth. What do we offer them when they come here? We have 309 churches in this city. We shouldn't have not one bit of crime. A young man was killed. Did the media cover it? Nope. They didn't. Uh-uh. They didn't kill. He was killed downtown High Street. Now, that was on High Street. Now, that surprised me, because had it been in, see, what's that, Newport, Dale's Home, Swanson Home, we knew it wasn't going to get covered. I call that South Side. That's where I'm at. There were dome come in for Alvara, because where I am, I am under the dome. My children, and I do claim every last one of them, they are my children, and they have nowhere to go within walking distance for recreation. That's feasible. I ask every last one of y'all again, how many of you would allow your 2 to 4 to 6 to 8-year-old child to walk across Frederick Boulevard, across Turnpike Road, across De Creek? They gotta go somewhere. This is a new budget year, Mr. Moody, Mr. Cherry, Mr. Rowe, Mayor, Ms. Marlene, Ms. Simmons, Pastor. This is a brand-new budget year, and I'm going to work real hard, real hard, I promise you. To see if I can't fill up this chamber with children that want that center built. And I want them to come here, and if it takes them from Tuesday night to the following Tuesday night to get your attention, that's my goal this year. Y'all gonna hear us on the South Side, whether you want to or not. Now I'm finished fussing. I want to say Happy Valentine's Day to all of y'all. And the reason why I want to say Happy Valentine's Day to you is because I do love most of you, some of the time. But I got a young man on my heart, and he can't be here, and this is a love that he loves. He loves being at City Council. And his name is James Overton. And we're going to go out in this city, and I'm going to ask every last one of you that call yourself loving him in some way, form, or fashion, reach out to him and show him some love. I know what Wilson Ward is going to do. I'm going to ask you, what are you going to do for him? He's done a lot for the city of Portsmouth. He's kept Wilson Ward alive, and I'm fighting to keep it alive, if for no other reason but his. Please join us while we try to save Slim by having a heart and meet with us real soon. This is personal. It's very personal, because he needs a heart. And show- let us, this city, show somebody else that we do have a heart, and we can, and we will work together. I dare you not to. Be blessed and Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Mr. Ben Schoenfeld? Phil?
Hello, Mayor Wright, ladies and gentlemen of City Council and City Manager Rowe. My name's Ben Schoenfeld, and I'm here tonight as a native of Portsmouth and a resident of Portsmouth to tell you and the citizens of our great city about Code for Hampton Roads. It's our local chapter of Code for America. Code for America, Code for America's mission is to shape public service by the people, for the people, for the 21st century. Code for Hampton Roads is a group of citizen volunteers residing throughout the region who use professional technology skills in service to communities and local governments. Through our activities, we help local government and community service organizations leverage web technologies for citizens. For example, our longest-running project is a mobile-location-based web app that uses real-time data published by Hampton Roads Transit. The app finds the closest bus stops, shows when the next bus will be at each stop, and which buses are on schedule early or late. The site has been running for over a year and without any promotion has earned hundreds of users. HRT publishes the data feed and routinely maintains it. Code for Hampton Roads volunteers take care of everything else at no cost to anyone. The app is free, live, and ready to use today. Code for Hampton Roads works with local governments throughout the region to transform data into tools citizens can use to answer questions and make decisions. You can use our tools, too. Sometimes we make apps with open data, and sometimes we help government make apps with open data. The key to all of this is found in those two words I keep repeating: open data. All throughout our city and region, there is data that is in the public domain but stuck in systems and formats that are not accessible. As a result, data are exported into print formats and cannot be easily repurposed. We call these closed data. By moving toward open data, cities can extract greater value from existing assets with little effort. Code for Hampton Roads volunteers support that effort. There are many other examples of the benefits of open data and stories of civic-minded volunteers who know how to put open data to work. In 35 cities and growing, Code for America volunteers have used open data to make bus apps, service alerts, budget dashboards, park finders, art finders, crime maps, and more. Imagine, you're on the way to work but stuck waiting with the kids at the bus stop, thinking, "That school bus should have been here five minutes ago, where is it?" In Boston, Massachusetts, there's an app for that. There's a hurricane coming, and you're looking for checklists and information about how to prepare for the worst. In Austin, Texas, there's an app for that. And maybe you want to open a business, and you need help understanding the city's permitting process. Well, in Santa Cruz, California, there's an app for that. Embracing open data and web technology in the ways I've described shows that Portsmouth is modern and internet-savvy. This is a vital quality for attracting and retaining industry, talent, and wealth in our region. We want you to know about open data because we think it will make our city better. We want you to know about Code for Hampton Roads because we love where we live and we want to pitch in where we know how. As a result of speaking before you tonight, we hope that members of council will support our future efforts to open data through policies, practices, and guidance. Finally, next week, on February 21st and 22nd, Code for Hampton Roads is hosting a free community event to help residents learn more about open data and how they can use it. I invite you all to attend and participate, so please, after the meeting tonight, ask me how, or search for Code for Hampton Roads online and get some more information on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me ask you real quick, how do you access the information, and what do you do? Is this a mapping process with programming all of these key points in to make it an app or make it real-time so people know where the bus is or whatever your data?
Sure, sure. As far as the bus app, that started about two years ago. We went, or one of our representatives, and we're lucky enough here to have, Code for America is a national organization out of San Francisco, and it's got a few different parts, and the part I participated in is the volunteer effort called the Brigade. And the national organizer of the Brigade lives in Virginia Beach, and so he leads our local chapter. He actually just did two years in San Francisco and is now back in Virginia Beach. So he went to HRT, and through some friends at the pilot, found out that they knew where all the buses were in real-time, but that data was not available to citizens. So he said, "Is there any way that you can quickly make that data available?" And so they put it in a text file, and it's got a bunch of, it's got like the bus number and the long coordinates. And then we were able to take that data, we take it off their server, and we created an app that you can access through your iPhone or Android phone, and it maps all the buses and tells you if they're late or on time and, you know, when the closest one is. So it's useful. We've heard, like I said, we have 100 users or more now. Every time it goes down, they yell at us on Twitter to hurry up and get it back up so they know when the bus is coming. So it's been, it's been great, and we have a number of other apps that we're focused on building and hope to do, and we'll talk about those at next Friday. And then all day Saturday, we'll be at, on Friday, we'll be at the Roper Center. Saturday, all day, we'll be at Dominion Enterprises, and hopefully, people will help us work on our stuff.
And how long have you been in Portsmouth?
I am born in Portsmouth, so I've been here, I've been here all my life. I live in Old Town.
Okay, and you're a programmer?
I am.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. I see your site says that you support civic hacking or the procuring of information. What cities do you have information from now?
Right, so I want to clear that term hacking gets kind of a bad rap.
It got my attention when I saw your website.
Yeah, sure. When we talk about hacking, we want you to think of, think of like MacGyver. You know, we get into these, we get into these situations where we don't have all the resources we want, and we don't have time and money, so we hack a solution together, and we make something, you know, using bubble gum and all the resources we have to make something and stand it up, and hopefully, it's useful to somebody. We have data now from, we have some, let's see, we have some crime data from Virginia Beach, we have some park data from Virginia Beach, from Norfolk, we have some GIS data. Portsmouth's given us some GIS data. So there, we've kind of gone around to different departments in the city when a project comes up that we're interested in implementing, and we ask, "Hey, do you guys have data? Can you give it to us?" And so we try to open it up and make use of it.
So you get it with permission, not hacking?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yes, yes. Absolutely.
Okay.
Very good. Now, you connect it with the cloud? Is that how you?
Sure.
Information?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, very good. I went to a conference, and they talked about cities being connected and using the cloud and all of those great things, and I think the mayor of Alexandria was one of the keynote panelists there. Ms. Simmons?
I'm sorry, Mayor. Seeing Mr. Schoenfeld standing here made me think of something Ms. Athena Jones said earlier, when she talked about what the city provided, and she said she couldn't even see a movie in the city of Portsmouth. And when she said it, I thought, "That's not true." And in fact, Mr. Schoenfeld's father, Fred Schoenfeld, owns the Commodore Theater in the 400 block of High Street, which was, say, beautifully restored in 1989, I think, and is a fabulous, as far as I'm concerned, best place to see a movie anywhere. So I just wanted to make that correction for the public. And Mr. Schoenfeld reminded me of that.
Thank you.
Perfect, and I'd like to meet with you one day and talk more about this. I'm very interested.
Terrific.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good night, sir.
Thanks.
Our final speaker is Mr. Tony Goodwin.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members, City Manager, City Attorney. My name is Tony Goodwin, and I reside in the community of Parkview. And tonight, I guess, is, we're kind of okay with this, you know, but at the same time too, I want to explain to you for the action that you've taken tonight on 14-55. At least it frees up the night to go to PTA. But I will stand by what I said in the courtroom as an expert witness, and that's how I labeled myself, and as a real estate agent licensed by the state of Virginia, and also, of course, serving as a community service member for the HPC. And the comments that I made were that I would say the same thing, and I did tell the judge at the same time that I would stand up beside any citizen that asked me to stand up there to defend what was right. And despite it was my father, but at the same time too, I don't take personal attacks lightly, nor do I take personal attacks against my family lightly either. And I tried to take the right route on this and have a discussion, and I was pretty much taken in that direction. And so I could do what I could do by simply stating the facts and showing that those guidelines were commissioned by this body and accepted and proved, and that's what we went by, and that's the reason you've had one appeal since 2008 on the HPC, because we follow those guidelines. So, that being said, I thank you very much for your time, and again, I'll be going to more PTA meetings now.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Members of council, there's no additional business before you this evening.
Okay, let me, before we adjourn, let me just say, I failed to mention that this Sunday, we celebrated at Living Word Victory Center Reverend Johnny Drake has the pastor there, the 200th anniversary of the Virginia-Liberia connection. And for a lot of you that probably don't know the history, there was great bit of communication with the state of Virginia, the Commonwealth, and the country of Liberia over in Africa, and back during the 1820s to 1865, there was about 12,000 citizens that left Virginia and went back to Liberia. And I think, I think about half of those, or maybe a third of those were there. And I only mention because Portsmouth's very own former ambassador, Bismark Myra, was there, and he was ambassador there and to several other African countries, and we had some very good dialogue after the celebration. I think they had a gentleman from Liberia, Ben Phillips, and to Reverend Johnny Drake and all of the folks, I would appreciate them for that and bringing that exposure here to the city of Portsmouth. With that, we adjourn.
Okey-dokey.